Good evening. This, the 59th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. In lieu of an invocation tonight, we will have a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by James Schofield of the Maryland Center for Veterans Education and Training.
Good evening, and thank you for a few moments of your attention. My name is Jim Schofield. I'm a member of the Board of McVat Maryland Center for Veterans Education and Training. At McVat, our mission is to provide homeless veterans and other veterans in need with comprehensive services that will enable them to rejoin their communities as productive citizens. And this evening, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to tell you about, first of all, our 5K-10K run that's coming up here on June 9th. You can read all about it at www.mcvat.org, and in your packages, you'll see flyers for the race. As I mentioned, it's a 5K-10K race. At McVat, one of the things we like to say is that two words that we don't want to see together are homeless and veteran. McVat has been at it for 24 years now, and this is the 24th running of the 5K-10K race. It's one of our significant fundraisers throughout the year. The race marshal this year, with many thanks to him, is Mr. Dick Cass, the president of the Ravens, and he and others have helped us line up a lot of good sponsors. McVat is 110,000 square foot facility, 249 beds of transitional housing, providing food, clothing, licensed clinical social workers, all toward that mission of helping our veterans get back toward life as productive citizens. If you have an opportunity or would like to make an opportunity, please reach out to Ms. Sarita Spencer, our Director of Development. She'd be happy to organize a tour. I mentioned our website. You can find us there. And Sarita's number, her card, is in your packet here, for those of you that have them. And for those watching, I'll give you the number. It's 410-576-9626. And last but not least, I wanted to tell you that I first learned of McVat in the context of the 5K-10K race when a man, a veteran, who had benefited greatly from McVat's services, worked in the office where I worked, is now back to, you know, full productive work, has a good job. And the words he said to me were simple. He said, "Jim, I know you're a runner. Check this out. There's a 5K-10K, and this organization saved my life." And that certainly got my attention, and now here I am, a few years later, to tell you about it, and so I look forward to seeing you out there. I'm personally planning to win the men's 6'4" to 6'4 1/2, 225 pounds and up, from Pennsylvania group. So, thank you all for your attention, and I'll look forward to seeing you out there.
Thank you. It is the council's custom to journalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to journalize the prayer. So moved by Councilman Scott, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of journalizing the invocation, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Madam President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the April 29th City Council meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? So moved by Councilwoman Sneed, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page 2 of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 190386, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020. For the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2020 year. Sponsor: City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 190387, Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year 2020. For the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the mayor and city council of Baltimore for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, providing for estimated billings pursuant to state law and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. Sponsor: City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 190388, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020. For the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal 2020, providing for certification of the approved budget to the State Superintendent of Schools and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor: City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 190389, High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Citywide Eligibility for Tax Credit. For the purpose of modifying the number of rental units required to qualify a multifamily dwelling for a high-performance market rate rental housing tax credit. Sponsor: Henry, Bullock, Stokes, Sneed, President Middleton, Clark.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development. I want to recognize Councilman Bill Henry first. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This bill is actually very simple. It just reduces the number of units from 20 to 10 in the hopes that by doing so, it will encourage more developers to do more smaller residential projects in more neighborhoods and broaden the use of this tax credit. I'm looking at it as a community development tool, but also as a way to increase the tax base and improve things for Baltimore as a whole. So I thank my co-sponsors, and I look forward to working with the Chair for a speedy hearing.
Thank you. Chair, could you... Chair, would like to add, Councilman Scott. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 190390, Rezoning 1617 Broning Highway. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1617 Broning Highway as outlined and read on the accompanying plat from the C4 zoning district to the C3 zoning district. Sponsor: Cohen.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 190154R, May is Older Americans Month. For the purpose of declaring May is Older Americans Month. Sponsor: Pinkett, Henry, Bullock, Stokes, Dorsey, Cohen, Sneed, President Middleton, Clark, Risinger, Burnett.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam President. I said earlier jokingly at the lunch that I introduced this on behalf of my grandmother, Charmaine Hickman. So Grandma, if you're watching, I love you. But each year, we see an increase in the number of older adults. They're making a positive impact in and around the 7th District as volunteers, employees, employers, educators, mentors, and advocates. They offer insight and experience that benefit the entire community. That's why Older Americans Month, OAM, has been recognizing the contributions of this growing population for 56 years. Led by the Administration for Community Living, each May, OAM provides resources to help older Americans stay healthy and independent, and resources to help communities support and celebrate their diversity. This year's OAM theme, Connect, Create, Contribute, encourages older adults in their communities to connect with friends, family, and local services and resources, create through activities that promote learning, health, and personal enrichment, contribute time, talent, and life experiences to benefit others. District 7 will celebrate OAM by promoting ways that community members of all ages can take part in helping West Baltimore thrive. Communities that support and recognize older adults are strengthened by their wisdom and insight. Join us in strengthening our communities this May and throughout the year. By introducing this resolution, I recognize the key role that each elder plays in the vitality of our neighborhoods. My office will promote the social media campaign, hashtag Connect, Create, and Contribute. Madam President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Note to add, Councilman Slyfer. Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move the resolution favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Dorsey. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 19-0154R, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the bottom of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved by Councilwoman Sneed, and second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and this calendar is approved. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
I've lost my place.
Mike, your microphone. Thank you. Sure.
Madam President, thank you so much. I would just simply like to acknowledge the presence of Tom Kulata, the 35-year director of the community school in Remington, and 10 or 11 of his most brilliant students who have come to, they're studying government, and they finally got around to us, and I'm so proud they have on such a significant evening. And I would ask, with your permission, that we... I would just ask that they stand to be acknowledged by this.
Could you please stand?
These are one... Thank you very much. You may be seated. And Madam Chair, if I may say so, I'm proud of Madam President. This is a program... I was around when it started. I had nothing to do with starting it. I was too busy trying to keep Tom Kulata from being arrested, but he wasn't, just for causing a revolution on the streets of Remington. And fortunately, I didn't stop him, and one of the things that he revolutionized was the education of young people in the community, and now across the city, who just don't fit into the normal, regular school pattern, but who turn out to be quite wonderful scholars when given the chance to attend the community school. And so, he started by, what is it you call it? Dumpster diving, Chris? Into a Baltimore City Public School dumpster to get science books, and with that, they opened their school at Guardian Angel Church in Remington, and for 35 years have turned out young people who just didn't fit into the normal schools. They all get into the community colleges without having to take makeup exams. They all go on to careers, and they all remember to come back to take care of the next generation. Proud to introduce them tonight. Thanks.
We will now move bills on Second Reader Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 180298, Franchise 26-Inch OHP Gas Main Granite Pipeline Through the Lands of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore. For the purpose of granting a franchise 50 feet wide to the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company to construct, use, and maintain a new 26-inch OHP gas main, and to decommission and maintain an existing 26-inch OHP gas main, both running through Gwyns Falls Leacon Park, owned by the mayor and city council of Baltimore, located in Baltimore City, Maryland, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee originally heard this bill in November 13, 2018, and recessed to receive more input. We then reconvened on April 23, 2019. There are technical amendments on your desks. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Risinger. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
A second from Councilman Risinger. All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The bill is moved to Third Reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190327, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is 2323 North Calvert Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2323 North Calvert Street, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations and certain off-street parking regulations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger to move the finding of facts.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the finding of facts on this bill.
Second from Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving the finding of a fact, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The findings are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger to move the bill.
Yeah. Madam President, there's no amendments. I move the bill favorable.
Chair, a second from Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill is moved to Third Reader.
City Council Bill 190335, Zoning Use Regulations Banquet Halls. For the purpose of providing that in an IMU zoning district, or as it may be renamed, an IMU One zoning district, banquet halls are allowed as a conditional use requiring approval by ordinance of the mayor and city council.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger to move the bill.
Madam President, I move the bill favorable.
Second from Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, all those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill is moved to Third Reader. Third Reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 180295, Baltimore City Landmark List Exteriors Hanlon Park. For the purpose of designating Hanlon Park in its entirety, 3051 Liberty Heights Avenue, 3001 North Hilton Street, and 2731 North Longwood Street, as an historical landmark exterior. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 190357, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System Interest Service Credits Death Benefits Direct Deposit and Technical Corrections. For the purpose of repealing certain obsolete and obsolescent provisions, changing the definition of regular interest for valuation purposes, clarifying the crediting of military service under certain circumstances, modifying the calculation of the cost of purchasing and transferring prior system service, non-credited city service, former Maryland Police Corps service, and service earned for employment covered under a former non-city pension, expanding the definition of minor child for certain purposes, allowing certain spousal beneficiaries age 70 and over to remarry without penalty of losing benefits, allowing new beneficiary elections and survivorship option elections within certain time periods, requiring that after a certain date and subject to certain exceptions, periodic benefit payments may be made electronically, defining certain terms, providing for special effective dates, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Fire and Police Employees Retirement System. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Madam President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing of Bill 19-0340 on July 10th at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is the purpose, to add the 800 block of North Chester Street, both sides to the parking management plan for the RPP Area 18, and correcting, conforming, and clarifying related provisions. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 19-0346 on July 10th at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is repeal of ordinance 96-032, the new Lexington Terrace Plan Unit Development. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say that with the budget, every year, there are three different ordinances that are introduced. For those watching at home, there's the Ordinance of Estimates, which is our budget. There's the Operating Budget for the school system, and there is the Annual Property Tax Rate. I'd like to move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is moved and carried.
Thank you, Madam President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 29th at 3:30 PM in chambers. City Council Ordinance 19-0386, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020. Madam President, I'd like to move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Henry. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion moves and is carried.
Thank you, Madam President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 19... Or Ordinance 19-0388, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020, on Wednesday, May 29th at 3:31 PM in council chambers. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Madam President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 29th at 5:00 PM. This is for Council Ordinance 19-0387, Annual Property Tax for Fiscal Year 2020. Please note that Baltimore City's constant yield tax rate will be advertised in the Baltimore Sun newspaper as required by law on Saturday, May 18th, 2019. This hearing is also referred to as Taxpayers' Night. Taxpayers' Night provides residents of Baltimore City the unique opportunity to share comments and concerns on the city's annual budget. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, and the rules are suspended.
Thank you, Madam President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold hearings on City Council Ordinance 19-0386, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020, from Monday, June 3rd through Friday, June 7th. On our colleague's desk is a printout of the complete schedule that will be published online later this evening with all the detail for each of the agencies. Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption? Now, all those... I mean, all those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Madam President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, June 3rd during that week at 7:00 PM. That will be specifically for the Baltimore City School System, City Council Ordinance 19-0388, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020. Madam President, Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, May 28th at 10:00 AM in chambers on Council Bill 18-0302, Late Night Commercial Operations Licensing at the request of Councilman Henry. Madam President, Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill 19-0376 on Tuesday, June 18th at 10:00 AM. This is Financial Disclosures, Fixing Filers, Filing and Filings. Say that three times quick, at the request of Councilman Dorsey. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill 19-0377 on Tuesday, June 18th at 10:05 AM. This is Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities at the request of Councilman Dorsey. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other committees on this side? Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move to suspend the rules so we may elect a new council president.
Second from Councilwoman Sneed. It is moved, and second, to suspend the rules so we can open nominations and start the procedure for electing a council president. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the rules are suspended. Nominations are open for council president. Are there any nominations for council president? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Madam President, with thanks for your strong leadership through these difficult times of transition, I rise to nominate for President of the Baltimore City Council, Councilman Brandon Scott.
Councilmember Scott is nominated for president. Are there any other nominations?
And let it be noted, we don't need a second, right?
There being no other nominations, nominations are closed. The elections... The election being uncontested, we will take a voice vote. President Middleton, aye. Councilman Cohen? Yes. Councilman Scott?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Henry? Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Slyfer? Councilman Pinkett?
Madam President, may I explain my vote?
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to my fellow council members, those here in attendance, and to those across the city getting home from work, picking up their kids, and simply hoping that there are better times ahead for our city. Almost two months ago now, our city was sent railing as the revelations of former mayor Catherine Pugh's business dealings began to come to light. For a city already challenged with chronic violence, inequity in public investment, inferior housing, crumbling infrastructure, and an underperforming educational system, this scandal has become yet another scar on our already marred public perception. Residents have been on a roller coaster of emotions as this drama is played out in the local and national media. We've had to watch as the reputation of the city that we all love has been trampled under the weight of this investigation, while the trust and confidence of the public lay pummeled. It is an unfortunate testament to how low we have fallen that the only relief to be found was in the mayor's resignation last week. As we turn the page on a new chapter for the city of Baltimore, we know the city is counting on the 14 of us, the members of this legislative body, to do our job and to move the city in the right direction. Tonight, we are voting on who will be the next city council president. I know firsthand that many members of the council have struggled with this decision. However, a decision must be made nonetheless. Pundits may want to simply talk in the terms of winners and losers, but after this vote, we will hear plenty of speculation about the 2020 election and how this vote may or may not change the political landscape. Yet, the real focus should be on the necessary work ahead to make a positive and lasting impact on the lives of our constituents. While someone will win and become the next president, I'm not casting my vote tonight to simply be with the winner. My constituents demand more than that from me. I will be casting my vote tonight in an effort to do what I strongly believe is in the best interest of our city. Division and infighting among the members of the city council is never good, but there has not been a time when this statement should resonate more than at this very moment. Despite our differences, we must come together and be a unified voice. Despite our differences, we must come together and be a unified voice. We must make certain that this is a day that builds hope, a day that restores trust, a day that recommits the promise that we have all made to our constituents, that the future of Baltimore will be far greater than its challenged past. While there are certainly varying opinions on how to move us forward, and we should debate those opinions with energy and passion, tonight's vote is more important than simply who wins. This vote should be about showing a unified sign of confidence to our constituents that the Baltimore City Council stands together. We are ready to do the hard work. We are ready to govern. There's an African proverb that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone; but if you want to go far, go together." Our city needs us to go far, and it needs us to go together. So tonight, I vote with my colleagues to unanimously elect the next city council president because it is the right thing to do for our city. So I say yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed?
I just want to say, while I'm going to vote yes, I just want to thank you, Madam Council President, for taking up the role, for standing in this position. I also want to thank my colleagues, because we are all on one accord, I believe, and we all want to see the city in a better light, with better headlines, so, and I know that we can do it. There's so many great things happening around Baltimore City, and I challenge the media to talk about the great things that are happening in Baltimore City, and the great things that happened in this council, and the people that work in this building and other buildings along in Baltimore City. So, thank you for your service and your hard work, and thank you to the constituents who let us share you for this time being. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'd like to begin, as my colleague has, it's awfully good to see a woman sitting there, and one who so ably and competently has taken us through this passage to our future. Thank you for that. As I cast my vote, I'd like to say that I am very proud to cast my vote for Councilman Brandon Scott. We've come up together a long way, most notably, he came to apply for a vacant council seat, and he doesn't get elected, he didn't get selected by the committee, but he was hired a week later by the president of the city council. He made such a good appearance and presentation, and I wrote him a note, and I think it said something like, "How soon can you get here?" Well, I'll be remembering those words for a long time. Soon, but not before he learned all the ropes of city government along the way. We did. We got on the phone together around the northeast, trying to get the blizzards cleared before spring and before our constituents got stuck. And Councilman has worked his way up, especially with people, especially with sports, especially with teams and youth, worked his way up and across the city, not just the city government. So here we are today, and he's about to create a vacant seat, one that we will be obliged and happy to fill. But we are most happy, and I am most pleased and proud to vote yes for this nominee to be our president, carrying our, the next generation, and all of us old folks too, into a good future for us all. Thank you.
The ayes have it, and Councilmember Scott is elected president of the city council. Let's give an applause. I would like to thank my colleagues for their support while I was filling in as council president. A special thank you to Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark and Councilman Edward Reisinger. Thank you, Mayor Young, for the support and assistance you provided while I occupied this seat to ensure the business of the council moved forward. I would like to thank my sixth district staff, Ty, Edwin, and Robert. Ty and Robert, could you please just stand and? For making sure we didn't miss a beat in terms of providing constituent service to residents of my sixth district. I would also like to thank Danielle Lorenzey, Michael Huber, and the entire city council staff for all of the hard work you put in every day to serve the residents of Baltimore City. Last but not least, I would like to thank my family, Glenn, president of ASME Local 44 and Council 67. And of course, my wonderful son Glenn Jr., and my friends for their wavering support from all around my district and around the city of Baltimore. Please join me in congratulating our new city council president, Brandon M. Scott. I wish him all the best in moving the business of the city council forward and making Baltimore the gem we all know it has the potential to be. I know I can speak on behalf of my fellow council colleagues. We are committed to your success. If you are successful, we as a body are successful, and our entire city will be successful. I pray for your strength and wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening. Colleagues, I am deeply honored and humbled by the confidence you have placed in me to lead this body. But before I go any further, I would like for my colleagues in all of Baltimore to join me in thanking Council Vice President Middleton for exemplifying grace and diligence as she carried out the duties of council president over this last month. I've appreciated having a great relationship with the council vice president since my days as a neighborhood liaison, and I look forward to continuing to do so in your role as council vice president. Colleagues, together, we have a lot of work to do to get Baltimore moving in the right direction by working to break the chokehold that the disease of gun violence has on our neighborhoods, improving our schools, and bringing accountability and leadership back to City Hall. To the people of Baltimore, I never expected to be here, but you have prepared this young boy from Park Heights to be ready for the responsibility of this role. I do not take the honor of holding this important office lightly, and you can rest assured that I will carry out my duties with the utmost integrity and respect for all. We've had some dark days. However, the passion and the hope of all of us working together will continue to lift us into the light. We will never quit, even in the face of tremendous pressure and seemingly insurmountable odds. I hope that you will keep me and the city in prayer as we work towards better days, toward a better Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Is that right?
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Pinkett, for bringing forth the resolution today to recognize May as, I want to get this right, Older Americans Month. Yesterday, my grandmother, a lifelong Baltimore resident, turned 101 years old. I can assure you, she's not watching Charm TV right now, but I'm just saying this because I'm saying this. But as our newly-elected council president just reminded me, I'm going to take over what he has done here diligently, meeting after meeting. We've also seen 101 homicides in Baltimore City this year. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence tonight's meeting to recognize that. Thank you.
So noted. Any other regular announcements? Councilwoman Clark?
Madam President, members of the council, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for a wonderful lady who died. Her name is Laura Warren. I really did know her, and she really gave me a lot of trouble on behalf of the neighborhood. She was supposed to. And that is what the neighbors and even I are celebrating. She was a lovely lady, a teacher, and she had a porch front right there overlooking Wyman Park, and she ran the neighborhood. No matter who was elected president, so watch out there, Councilman, you never know. No matter who was elected president of the neighborhood, she ran it and told us all how to behave. And so, she has passed and giving directions in a higher place, and I hope that you would include her on our moment of silence tonight. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Madam President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, May 13 at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. And Madam President, I ask for a moment of silence for the 101 homicides and Ms. Laura
Thank you. There being no more business, this concludes the 59th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council.